Good evening, and I'd like to call this meeting to order Tuesday, November 17th, regular board meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We're always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting contains three opportunities for those attending to comment on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation, and law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We hope that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community, so thank you all for attending. And just in case you don't know, our three public comment sessions are near the beginning of this meeting on any topic of your interest, some point in the middle where it is on agenda items only, and then finally, for those who want to stick around to the end and have any feedback or discussion on things that we discussed tonight, then a third, open topics on any item. And so with that, Ms. Kennedy, if you would call the roll.
Patrick Sullivan.
Here.
Daphna Kendall.
Here.
Betsy Calvert-Baglio.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Justin Durin, absent. Bill Hare.
Here.
Fern Spruill.
Here.
Greg Stankiewicz.
Here.
Connie Witter.
Here.
Evelyn Spahn, absent. Brian Liu.
Here.
And Amy Wang.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, and also for those of you who don't attend often, we have the agenda that you have, I think, in front of you, and in order to sort of expedite things a little bit, typically what we've been doing this year is to go through in order in terms of discussion of agenda items. We tend to bunch the votes up for things that don't require a roll call vote in one big vote at the end, but you can follow along with the agenda, we'll pretty much stay on that. And so if we would like to start with the adoption of minutes, and then Mr. Cochran would like to say something after that. So adoption of the minutes, item D. You can have a motion?
Betsy.
Betsy, and a second, Greg?
Please place your votes.
Thank you, okay. And now before we turn to item E, Mr. Cochran has superintendent's report to give, but in light of certain events that I think we're all aware of, he'd like to say something just before we all get started on the public forum. So I'll turn it over to you, Stephen.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, and good evening, everyone. Welcome, welcome all of those of you who are watching at home tonight. I've asked to go a little bit out of order tonight because based on recent events affecting our middle school students, I feel compelled to begin this meeting with really a call to action to our school and to our community. Hate exists in our world, and as much as we strive to protect our children from it, they see it, they hear it, they feel it. And so, yes, we do, we want to protect our children from hate, but we also need to empower them to stand up against it. A little over a week ago, we learned that a Google spreadsheet two of our teachers created for our eighth grade science lab, and which they made available to the entire eighth grade class, that sheet was vandalized with messages that were racist, anti-Semitic, and sexual in nature. As the superintendent, as a community, we are grieved and we are angered by these messages of hate. Were the messages posted by our own students? We are unsure. Our investigation has suggested that one student at JW posted the spreadsheet to an online platform and thereby opened it to the world. It was subsequently hacked with messages of hate, but those messages could have come from anywhere in our country and likely included numerous individuals. We are continuing to investigate, but we may never know who placed the hateful messages in the document. What we do know is that our students watched it happen and for whatever reason struggled to report it to their parents, their teachers, their principal. In many ways, this struggle is not surprising. Research would suggest that only three percent of students feel empowered to stand up to bullying behaviors or to call out messages of hurt and hate. And yet, our eighth grade students had just come back from Washington DC where they toured the Holocaust Museum and where they actively reflected on which groups in our country were not represented by the monuments in our nation's capital. As a district, we've rewritten curriculum to provide perspectives and to celebrate broader and more nuanced narratives. We've looked at our literature to make sure it represents different cultures, religions, and genders. Every year, JW holds its Unity Day to celebrate our differences and the values that connect us. Our staff are participating in workshops and trainings on racial literacy and equity. This year, we will be conducting an audit, an equity audit of culture and curriculum, which I will talk about later tonight, but we have to do more and we have to do better for our children. Hateful views and attitudes have become pervasive in our world. In the past year, the number of incidents involving hurtful comments and hateful speech have skyrocketed in schools across the country. The tone of national politics is combative. Every day, we're seeing reports of discord and animosity in the media. We began our school year with scenes from Charlottesville. The hate and prejudice is looming large, and as a community, we need to help our kids stand up to that. And so this week, Principal Jason Burr will be meeting with the eighth grade students in their science classes and talking to them about this latest incident. He will encourage them to talk about their own feelings. He will ask them how the situation could have been handled differently. He will solicit from them ideas for how they believe we can create a safe, inclusive, and respectful school community. In addition, Mr. Burr has reached out to Josh Cohen of the Anti-Defamation League to ask for his help and to explore the ADL's peer leadership program entitled "The World of Difference." The program is designed to help young people become peer leaders who work with their classmates to create safe and inclusive school communities. Learning about social justice issues is a lifelong process, and the World of Difference Institute helps students develop the skills and the values to respond to everything from put downs to racially insensitive comments. As a district, we will continue to work to instill in our students values of respect and tolerance, but we cannot do this work alone. As Principal Jason Burr wrote in his letter to eighth grade families this week, "We all need to make sure we are upstanders rather than bystanders." I'm calling on our entire community to take the incidents of racism, anti-Semitism, and sexism that are in our world and in our local community seriously. I'm asking for each of us, parents, staff, students, board members, community members, to take a stand against the injustices we see in our day-to-day lives and to model that stance for one another. I'm asking for each of us to call out the comments we hear that make us or others uncomfortable, to advocate for those around us who are vulnerable, and to stand against disrespectful messages and actions. We can stop the hate We can stop the hateful rhetoric and the disregard that we see spreading. We can create a culture that values and respects all people. It is up to each of us and all of us. As Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "In the end, we will not remember the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." We can no longer be silent. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And with that, we turn to item E, which is our public forum. This is our first chance for members of the community to come to the microphone. We just asked that you, two things, that you identify yourself and where you live, and number two, that you be mindful of other people who may want to speak who are waiting behind you, and so to keep your remarks appropriately within that timeframe. So with that, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm Wendy Heath, Benjamin Rush Lane. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My daughter is in the autism program at Princeton High School. I'm very pleased that we're part of the Princeton School District, and I'm very grateful for the opportunities that she has had there. I'm here to tell you about a concern I have, though, of the scheduling that we had for her courses at the high school this fall. Within that program, you may or may not know, students get job training, which is, it's a wonderful program. They start building a resume in an effort to help them later on when they'll be looking for employment. As I understand it, after the first year at Princeton High, students can work off-campus, and we partner with many fine facilities, but in order to go off-campus, they need two adjacent sessions so that they have time to actually travel there and work. When we got my daughter scheduled this fall, she did not have two adjacent sessions. She had the required courses like math and science, but because she didn't have two adjacent sessions, she couldn't go off-campus, off-site. We contacted our case manager, and we talked about this, and we were told that we could have two adjacent sessions, but if we put two sessions together, our choices of what I call electives, I don't know if you still call them specials, they'd be very limited. I wouldn't, I'm not gonna bore you with the details. Basically, in order to get two back-to-back sessions, my daughter was limited to being offered two courses she has already taken, which is odd. There was also an option of a new course that she hadn't taken in studio art, but that would mean dropping a course in adult daily living, which frankly, we think is crucial. So we elected to include adult daily living in her schedule and not to have two school-to-work sessions. She's taking a course, she has taken again. Frankly, she loves it, it's dance, and we love it too, so we're okay with that. But she's not working off-campus, she's working at Princeton High School in two non-adjacent school-to-work sessions. It's not as advantageous. I'm told from a member of the case management staff that this scheduling problem is not just unique to my child, but it is something that happens for many in the autism program. Basically, we need more choices. I'm not asking for brand-new courses to be developed in the autism program. What I'd like you to think about is asking teachers to consider opening their classes up to those in the autism program in some way that's modified. I know that teachers are busy, our students often come with aids that theoretically can help the students' needs get met. We basically need welcoming teachers who are willing to think outside the box. My daughter's options are already limited, but there are some limitations I don't understand. So for example, my daughter likes the arts. We're told that my daughter can't take choir even though she wants to because choir at Princeton High School is a serious audition-driven program. I'm told my daughter can't take musical theater because she's not allowed to take the prerequisites that are required for that. I'm told my daughter can't be involved in a musical theater production because productions are staffed entirely for musical theater classes. So I'm just bringing this to your attention. I'm hoping for more options for our children, and I hope that these scheduling issues can be considered in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kim Marks. I'm at 327 Snowden, and I want to first start by thanking you very much for what you've just said. I came tonight to publicly condemn what's happened at the middle school, but also to voice support for the district as we work through this. And I'm pleased that we're not treating this as an isolated event because unfortunately, it is not an isolated event. This is not even the second event of this nature that we've had at JW since the beginning of the school year, and this is an alarming trend, and it's moving at a pace that we need to check. And I share your frustration. The schools are teaching empathy, and they're teaching about the Holocaust, and they're teaching about inclusion and racial sensitivity, but something's not working. This class did just come back from the Holocaust Museum, and something's not working. And I've been so impressed by what we've done as a district to study about how to bring our schools into the 21st century. We've looked at facilities, and structures, and classes, and schedules. Let's bring that same energy to bear here. Let's study what it is that we're teaching, because it's not about how much we're teaching them, it's about how well we're teaching them. And I recently was absolutely shocked to learn that there's a serious rise of anti-Semitism in school districts in New Jersey that teach Anne Frank but don't frame it properly. That's stunning, right? We assume that there's some beautiful moment where people get, aha, I get it, but it doesn't happen. So we need to look at how well we're teaching this. Study it, ask the kids. We need to also look at the other things that are happening. There are kids wandering the halls of our schools using a word like ginger as an anagram for a horrible word because they think that they can be blatantly and surreptitiously racist at the same time. We need to address this. We also need to look at the consequences of these kinds of incidents. We need to make sure that we're studying and identifying the right consequences that produce not only transformation but deterrence from other kids doing this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marks. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jenny Ludmer of 33 Caldwell Drive, and I also want to thank you for your comments and piggyback off of them. A recent study by John Rogers at UCLA's Institute for Democracy, Education, and Access has documented this nationwide rise in incidents of bigotry and intolerance in K through 12 classrooms all around our country. Unfortunately, it is clear that Princeton has not escaped this national trend, and we know this from several incidents, excuse me, as Kim just mentioned. The UCLA study suggests that we have to act proactively to stop this growing tide of intolerance, but we also need to act, as she was saying, effectively. So while it's easy to suspend or otherwise simply punish students, and that response often feels warranted, we would argue, and I'm writing this letter with two others, that it would not be most effective. There are proven ways to intervene to stop intolerance and bullying, and we are very fortunate that we have an expert in this area right here in our community. Princeton Professor Betsy Levy Pollak just earned a MacArthur Genius Award for her research on how to effectively influence social norms and reduce bullying. And I'll send this by email so you can have a link to her information. But briefly, Dr. Pollak's novel Student-Driven Intervention identified highly-connected students and asked them to brainstorm the school's problems, and then gave them the tools that they would need to lead a school-wide grassroots campaign for change. This approach created a 30% reduction in disciplinary reports of peer conflict in just one year. And it shows that it's possible to reduce these conflicts through a bottom-up, student-driven approach. So we urge you to incorporate this work into a broader restorative justice model for our schools. We believe we speak for many parents when we say that intolerance is unacceptable, and we, as a community, need to seek a novel and effective solution. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, but also Julia Sass Ruben, a high school parent, and Yael Neve, a Littlebrook parent. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Any other comments from the public at this time? As you know, you will have other opportunities, but I just want to thank the speakers for reinforcing the values and norms of this community. It's important to hear from you in times like this, and so we really appreciate you coming, spending the time, and saying what you said. With that, I'd return to item F, which is the Board President's Report. And I'll keep it brief, but I just wanted to shout out to six people who spent a lot of time, you know, working to make this school district and the experience of our children better, and that's Jenny Ludmer, James Fields, Beth Baron, Jess Deutsch, Michelle Tuck-Ponder, and Julie Ramirez. I just wanted to thank each one of those six people. I spent time with all of them, very talented people, very passionate about education and about our children. It's hard to run for office, as we all know. You're putting yourself out there, it takes a lot of time. I saw people working very hard, sometimes I didn't even notice when I saw them, but they were working hard, spending their own resources, spending their time because they wanted to make a difference. And so, win or lose, I think the community owes them a debt of gratitude for all the time and effort that they put into their election. I'd also like to thank the three who were elected. Beth Baron, Jess Deutsch, and Michelle Tuck-Ponder were looking forward to working with you next year. I think some of you are here tonight, and so just wanted to congratulate you and thank all six of you. So just round of applause for all of them. So it's exciting. I think, you know, one of the things that I've mentioned recently is that, probably a lot of reasons, we had such a big group of people running. The first time I ran, there was nobody running against me. That's why I'm here. But, you know, it's an exciting time in our nation as well as in our school district. There's so many great things happening. I say that almost every meeting, but I think we're all excited with all the changes that we're seeing and the approaches that we're taking. We all feel so optimistic about what the future's gonna hold for our kids. So, again, it's a great time to be working in the school district. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cochran to talk about some of those initiatives and things that we can expect coming up in the near future.
So I want to share a few things with the public today and the board. I wanted to begin with the message about hate not having any home in this district, and I want to follow that up with the work that we're gonna be doing to audit our culture and our curriculum around the issues of equity. And so we approved a consultant at our last meeting, and I wanted to share with the board and with the community the work that will be undertaken over the course of the next few months as she comes into our district and works with the students, staff, and families to help us identify strengths and also areas of focus for us in the area of equity. So Marcelline DeBose is our equity consultant. She comes with decades of experience, did a great deal of work for the Minnesota schools, now working out of Atlanta. And she will be developing a survey of students, staff, and families that will go out in December, beginning of December through the middle of December. She will also be here December 4th, 5th, 11th, and 12th to conduct focus groups, again, with students, with our parents, with our administrators, with teachers. And she will then be reviewing our curriculum with an eye towards equity, diversity, representation of races and cultures, genders, looking at our data regarding discipline, graduation, placement data, classification data of students with special needs, and then generating for us a report that identifies areas of strength in the district as well as areas of need and next steps. So we hope to have a professional development plan over the course of several years. It comes from her work. I did want to share with the board the questions that will guide the survey and the focus groups, and these are, there will be more questions that will be generated by these basic ones, but essentially, she's looking to ask five categories of questions. One, are our students achieving required academic outcomes? All of our students. Are all of our students and families' day-to-day school experiences welcoming and engaging regardless of race, religion, gender, home language, socioeconomic status, immigration status, special ed, or status as LGBTQ? Third, is our curriculum reflective of and relevant to the diversity of our student body? Does our curriculum prepare students to understand and respect the diversity of perspectives present in their classrooms and in society? Do we authentically partner with our students and families, affirming their essential role in influencing and informing, teaching, and learning in the classroom? And finally, do the processes and outcomes of our school system contribute to creating a more just society? Are any of the processes or outcomes of our school system implicit with existing injustices? So those will be the questions that will guide the survey, that will guide the focus group discussions she'll be leading, and will then be able to provide us with a framework for the recommendations moving forward in the district. So I wanted to make the board and the public aware that we'll do the survey in the next few weeks, and we'll be sending out emails and writing in the focus groups. Questions from the board?
No, there's more. I just had one question? Yes. So Steve, thanks for that. I know Student Achievement Committee for the last couple of years has been asking to turn and focus on this issue. We've had members of the community come and ask when we're gonna focus on this issue, and we always said, we want to get data, we want to get really hard data. It's the thing that made a difference when we did the high school survey. Right, Challenge Success. The Challenge Success survey. Prior to that, it was a lot of anecdotes, but not a lot of hard data, and the hard data was meaningful. So I appreciate, thank you for doing this, and we're really excited to hear about what is gonna come up. And I just would point out one thing that I'm always suspicious of is homework. And so you said that they were gonna talk about class data and classification, other things like that, but will we be able to drill down into that level of how homework affects a child's career over time, and especially, you know, living in a home where homework may be more difficult to do, does that cause a child to withdraw or give up? So I was just wondering if that was, if that was or could be a focus. No, I'm glad you brought that up, so I'm happy to share that feedback with Marceline so she can incorporate that into her survey, which she's still in the process of developing. Okay, thanks. I'll get out of the way now. All right. The next thing, some very happy news. While the rest of us were voting here on Election Day, Annie Kosek, Louis Ramirez, and Kami Woodson were representing Littlebrook Elementary School in Washington DC and receiving their Blue Ribbon Award. And so I thought it might be nice for Annie to take just a moment to share with the board and the members of the community what that Blue Ribbon process entailed and what the experience was like in Washington DC. So, thank you. Annie, if you want to take it away and just share a few words.
Thank you. Well, I am delighted to share this experience with you, and I brought a little ravioli just to celebrate with us tonight. Ravioli is the school mascot giraffe. So the U.S. Department of Education, since 1982, has been recognizing schools for excellence in education. This year, of 133 public schools in the U.S., only 292 received this distinction. So we were quite proud to be one of them. The nomination process begins with the State Department of Education Chief Officers nominating schools. Each state is able to nominate a certain number based on their K-12 enrollment and on the number of public schools within the state. So that means that, well, for 2017, Littlebrook was nominated as an exemplary, high-performing school, and that means that our performance on state assessments in both ELA and math fell within the top 15% of public schools in New Jersey, and for every subgroup, our performance levels were in the top 40% for both language arts and math. Once we accepted the nomination in January, the formal application process began, and as a full staff, this gave us a wonderful opportunity to reflect on our practices and to think really deeply about the very things that make- to think really deeply about the very things that make Littlebrook the gem of a school that it is. So, a committee of eight people, eight staff members, took on the actual writing of the application, which required very concise but clear and meaningful descriptions in six areas of our educational environment. So, we wrote about what was at the heart of our curriculum and instruction, about our school climate and culture, how we engage families and communities, the scope and importance of professional development, our school leadership, and then we noted very specific strategies that we use to assure the academic success of all of our students. The National Blue Ribbon Program wants to acknowledge schools for four distinct things in addition to high performance on state tests. They want schools that stay close to the real action of teaching and learning, schools that hold high standards for all teachers, students, and administrators, schools that use data diligently to adapt teaching and learning to support every student, and schools where mutual respect and trust run deep in the culture of the school. I knew we had both, the performance levels, and we had each of those things as well. I want to say that the Littlebrook staff is highly deserving of this award. They are truly reflective practitioners, always with an eye toward new and innovative approaches, and always recognizing the whole child and every child. Littlebrook families are highly deserving of this award as well. Parent involvement is high, and we value the diversity and expertise that our families bring to the educational experience at Littlebrook. But I really appreciate that the Blue Ribbon Schools looks for schools that stay close to the real action of teaching and learning, because I believe that is what Littlebrook has done, and that is why they have earned this distinction. Littlebrook consistently, over time, maintains an instructional soundness. We've offered a variety of strong programs. We support so many, and it's so supported in many wonderful ways by our dedicated and involved PTO. The children are actively engaged in activities and projects and special events that raise their level of joy at school and their overall success as learners. But importantly, it is the day-to-day instruction and classroom learning experience delivered by talented and skilled staff that keeps Littlebrook functioning at this exemplary level. At Littlebrook, our steadfast staying close to the real action of teaching and learning has allowed our students to develop deeper and broader understandings of curriculum concepts and also how their individual and collective ability can affect change. I know that the teachers and support staff's attention to what really matters will keep Littlebrook not just as a good school, but a great one. I'm proud to have been among them. Thank you, Steve, and thank you, board, for acknowledging us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Just, well, as the only board member with children at Littlebrook and went through Littlebrook, I just want to say, I don't know if you know this, but I would say that Littlebrook's the best thing that ever happened to Jack. And for those of you that don't know, we moved here when Jack was in second grade. And under Annie's leadership, there were true professionals there that not only taught him, but really cared about him. And, you know, wherever he goes, we'll never forget the experience he's had at Littlebrook. And so, thank you, Annie. And Annie was there 14 years, so deserves full credit for that award.
So, I will say, both my boys actually did graduate from Littlebrook.
Yeah.
And both of my boys graduated from Littlebrook.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Great. And we'll be having a celebration for staff on Friday. Yes?
Yes, this Friday, the staff and the students, I believe, are having a little assembly.
Wonderful. Yeah. Terrific. All right. Anything more you wanted to say about your experience in Washington, D.C. or that was your good?
Well, it actually was a wonderful time. We were there for two days, and they had a series of workshops for us to attend as well as the luncheon and the presentation of the awards. And there were 342 schools awarded, and they took the time to acknowledge each one separately.
That's why it was two days.
So, it was a long event, yes. Yeah. But it was wonderful.
All right. It's a great distinction for the school and for the district, and thank you, Annie.
Thank you.
Just a quick shout out to...
Fights again?
No, no, it's fine. For our coaches and our athletes, we have, I believe, our boy soccer team is playing right now in the state semifinals. So, we wish them luck. I'm sure there are people watching them now as opposed to watching the board meeting, but we're with them in spirit. So, boy soccer did well. Our boys cross-country team, another stellar performance, Mercer County champs, group four sectional champs, qualified for the meet of champions for the third year in a row. Girls soccer advanced to central group quarterfinals. Girls cross-country, 13th consecutive year of qualifying for states, longest school streak, I think, active in the league. Field hockey, nine-three-and-one season and advanced in the Mercer County Tournament Finals. Girls tennis, finished second in their division with a 16-and-3 record. Volleyball, 31-and-2, undefeated at home. Do I see the coach in the back? There she is. All right. So, yeah, won the league championship for the second year in a row. Our cheerleading squad is preparing for the annual CBC competition, and they're defending champions in that. And our football team makes us proud. And really, while they didn't have a winning season, they exemplified the mission and values that we have for our athletics program here at Princeton. And I thought it worth just reiterating those for those here and those watching at home. So, four values. Joy of sport. So, think about all of our athletes. There's joy in the act of playing a sport, joy in the physical and mental rigor of preparing for competition, and joy in being a part of something larger than ourselves and contributing to a team. Education through athletics. Our fields, our courts, or extensions of our classrooms. Our program is designed to help our young people optimize their performance in life. We want them to be people of character, able to win with grace, lose with poise, and compete in a way that honors the game and their opponent. We want to teach them what it means to lead and what it means to follow. We want them to reflect after every performance and use setbacks as the stepping stones to future success. We are committed to an athletic program that inspires our students to set challenging goals and to achieve them. And we're committed to a program that helps our students learn the all-important lesson of how to balance athletics with academics and with many other commitments they have in their lives. Community pride. Sports can be a catalyst for the creation of community. The athletic program of the Princeton Public Schools strives to bring together students, staff, parents, alumni, and residents of our town. We value the support of partners through our community. Moreover, through their engagement, we seek to build a sense of pride in our program and in our young people. And finally, athletic achievement. We honor the long tradition of athletic accomplishment in the Princeton Public Schools, and we're committed to providing every student who wants to participate in our athletic programs the coaching, equipment, and support to do so. We celebrate the excellence of our athletes and of our programs, and we believe that our achievements in athletics are reflective of the excellence we value in all our endeavors as a district. So, congratulations to our coaches and to our athletes on a great fall season. And finally, does the board, you want me to keep going with the discussion of later start time for schools?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, instead of listening to me for a while, I actually have someone much more engaging. I have a 10-minute TED Talk on this topic, which will actually, I think, summarize a lot of the research behind why it is critical for us to be considering changing the start time of our middle school and high school to somewhat later so our students get more sleep. And you'll see the positive impact based on the research that that can have on their physical health, their mental health, and their academic performance. So, if you can, you're queued up, and we're ready to watch this, and then we can ask questions and talk about it as a board.
It's 6:00 in the morning, pitch black outside. My 14-year-old son is fast asleep in his bed, sleeping the reckless, deep sleep of a teenager. I flip on the light and physically shake the poor boy awake because I know that, like ripping off a Band-Aid, it's better to get it over with quickly. I have a friend who yells "fire" just to rouse her sleeping teen, and another who got so fed up that she had to dump cold water on her son's head just to get him out of bed. Sound brutal, but perhaps familiar? Every morning, I ask myself, "How can I, knowing what I know and doing what I do for a living, be doing this to my own son?" You see, I'm a sleep researcher. So, I know far too much about sleep and the consequences of sleep loss. I know that I'm depriving my son of the sleep he desperately needs as a rapidly growing teenager. I also know that by waking him up hours before his natural biological clock tells him he's ready, I'm literally robbing him of his dreams, the type of sleep most associated with learning, memory consolidation, and emotional processing. But it's not just my kid that's being deprived of sleep. Sleep deprivation among American teenagers is an epidemic. Only about one in 10 gets the eight to 10 hours of sleep per night recommended by sleep scientists and pediatricians. Now, if you're thinking to yourself, "Phew, we're doing good. My kid's getting eight hours," remember, eight hours is the minimum recommendation. You're barely passing. Eight hours is kind of like getting a C on your report card. There are many factors contributing to this epidemic, but a major factor preventing teens from getting the sleep they need is actually a matter of public policy, not hormones, social lives, or Snapchat. Across the country, many schools are starting around 7:30 a.m. or earlier, despite the fact that major medical organizations recommend that middle and high schools start no earlier than 8:30 a.m. These early start policies have a direct effect on how much, or really, how little, sleep American teenagers are getting. They're also pitting teenagers and their parents in a fundamentally unwinnable fight against their own bodies. Around the time of puberty, teenagers experience a delay in their biological clock, which determines when we feel most awake and when we feel most sleepy. This is driven in part by a shift in the release of the hormone melatonin. Teenagers' bodies wait to start releasing melatonin until around 11:00 p.m., which is two hours later than what we see in adults or younger children. This means that waking a teenager up at 6:00 a.m. is the biological equivalent of waking an adult up at 4:00 a.m. Now, in the unfortunate days when I have to wake up at 4:00 a.m., I'm a zombie, functionally useless. I can't think straight. I'm irritable, and I probably shouldn't be driving a car. But this is how many American teenagers feel every single school day. In fact, many of the, shall we say, unpleasant characteristics that we chunk up to being a teenager, moodiness, irritability, laziness, depression, could be a product of chronic sleep deprivation. For many teens battling chronic sleep loss, their go-to strategy to compensate is consuming large quantities of caffeine in the form of Bente Frappuccinos or energy drinks and shots. So, essentially, we've got an entire population of tired but wired youth. Advocates of sleep-friendly start times know that adolescence is a period of dramatic brain development, particularly in the parts of the brain that are responsible for those higher-order thinking processes, including reasoning, problem-solving, and good judgment. In other words, the very type of brain activity that's responsible for reining in those impulsive and often risky behaviors that are so characteristic of adolescence and that are so terrifying to us parents of teenagers. They know that, like the rest of us, when teenagers don't get the sleep they need, their brains, their bodies, and behaviors suffer with both immediate and lasting effects. They can't concentrate. Their attention plummets, and many will even show behavioral signs that mimic ADHD. But the consequences of teen sleep loss go well beyond the classroom, sadly contributing to many of the mental health problems that skyrocket during adolescence, including substance use, depression, and suicide. In our work with teens from L.A. Unified School District, we found that teens with sleep problems were 55% more likely to have used alcohol in the past month. In another study with over 30,000 high school students, they found that for each hour of lost sleep, there was a 38% increase in feeling sad or hopeless and a 58% increase in teen suicide attempts. And if that's not enough, teens who skimp out on sleep are at increased risk for a host of physical health problems that plague our country, including obesity, heart disease, and diabetes. Then there's the risk of putting a sleep-deprived teen with a newly-minted driver's license behind the wheel. Studies have shown that getting five hours or less of sleep per night is the equivalent of driving with a blood alcohol content above the legal limit. Advocates of sleep-friendly start times and researchers in this area have produced tremendous science showing the tremendous benefits of later start times. The findings are unequivocal, and as a sleep scientist, I rarely get to speak with that kind of certainty. Teens from districts with later start times get more sleep. To the naysayers who may think that if schools start later, teens will just stay up later, the truth is, their bedtimes stay the same, but their wake-up times get extended, resulting in more sleep. They're more likely to show up for school. School absences drop by 25% in one district, and they're less likely to drop out. Not surprisingly, they do better academically. So, this has real implications for reducing the achievement gap. Standardized test scores in math and reading go up by two to three percentage points. That's as powerful as reducing class sizes by one-third fewer students or replacing a so-so teacher in the classroom with a truly outstanding one. Their mental and physical health improves, and even their families are happier. I mean, who wouldn't enjoy a little more pleasantness from our teens and a little less crankiness? Even their communities are safer because car crash rates go down, a 70% reduction in one district. Now, given these tremendous benefits, you might think, "Well, this is a no-brainer, right? So, why have we, as a society, failed to heed this call?" Often, the argument against later start times goes something like this. "Why should we delay start times for teenagers? We need to toughen them up so they're ready for the real world." But that's like saying to the parent of a two-year-old, "Don't let Johnny nap, or he won't be ready for kindergarten." Delaying start times also presents many logistical challenges, not just for students and their families, but for communities as a whole. Updating bus routes, increased transportation costs, impact on sports, care before or after school, these are the same concerns that come up in district after district, time again around the country as school start times are debated. And they're legitimate concerns, but these are problems we have to work through. They are not valid excuses for failing to do the right thing for our children, which is to start middle and high schools no earlier than 8:30 a.m. And in districts around the country, big and small, who have made this change, they've found that these fears are often unfounded and far outweighed by the tremendous benefits for our student health and performance and our collective public safety. So, tomorrow morning, when, coincidentally, we get to set our clocks back by an hour, and you get that delicious extra hour of sleep, and the day seems a little longer and a little more full of hope, think about the tremendous power of sleep and think about what a gift it would be for our children to be able to wake up naturally. And think about what a gift it would be for our children to be able to wake up naturally in harmony with their own biology. Thank you, and pleasant dreams.
Thank you for listening to that and to reflecting on it. I just want to place the proposal that we have for start times, school start times for next year, in the context for Princeton Public Schools and give a little background as to why we arrived at the proposal for an 8:45 start time for our middle school and high school students next year. Can I get the PowerPoint back? So Patrick referred earlier to the Challenge Success Survey and the data that's been driving a lot of the initiatives we've been moving forward with. And we certainly got results from this survey that our students took back in December around topics of stress, academic engagement, overall health and well-being, and sleep. So just a quick overview of some key highlights from this survey. It was taken by 90% of our students at the high school back in December. Key takeaways: high levels of stress and lower levels of really joyful engagement in learning. So 80% expressed feeling often or always stressed by schoolwork; only 15% indicated they were truly, truly enjoying the learning. A lot of kids doing school, just sort of going through the motions, turning in their work but not really feeling invested in it. On the contrary, after-school, 73% reported that their extracurricular activities, their sports, their clubs, they did enjoy. And so the challenge became, how do we get that passion, motivation for mastery from their after-school activities into the regular school day? We came up with some strategies. Those of you who have students at the high school or have been following the initiatives in the district this year, you've seen some of these in play already. So we're doing a lot of focus on problem-based learning, interdisciplinary, personally meaningful. We've played with a different schedule, with the block schedule a little bit, rotating periods we're looking at. Later start time was one of those strategies. So a few other key takeaways from the Challenge Success Survey. Homework, which is what you had asked about. Three to three-and-a-half hours a night is what our students reported last year. We'll be doing the survey again this year, come December, I believe, and I'm very eager to hear the feedback, because we did implement a number of changes this year. And the anecdotal reporting has been that students are feeling the effects of that. So we'll be interested to see the actual data. Sleep. Eight to 10 hours is the recommendation from the CDC, from the doctors associations. Our students were reporting between six and six-and-a-half hours of sleep a night, significantly under the minimum. And that chronic sleep loss takes a toll. Gender differences was the other takeaway. On average, girls experience more stress, more homework, and less sleep than our boys. So areas of urgency as a result of the Stanford survey—homework was one, and we've talked about the ways that we have attempted to address that. Stress, overall, was a major focus for us. And sleep was a third area of urgency. The CDC recommends eight to 10 hours for adolescents. The Association of Pediatrics urges middle and high schools to aim for start times that allow students to receive eight-and-a-half to nine-and-a-half hours of sleep. They're suggesting 8:30 or later. And we know that chronic loss of sleep negatively affects mental health, physical health, and academic achievement. So we are—oh, one more very important thing that came away from the Challenge Success Survey was this identification by our students of their teachers across grades as being people who truly cared about them. And it was that group of teachers at the high school, meeting with the administrators, who really crafted the changes in the schedule, the changes in instructional strategy, and who put forth this proposal that, "You know what? Maybe we need to be starting school later. We know it's going to be a burden, there's going to be problems we have to surmount, but it's the right thing to do for our kids." So what is the proposal? I sent a letter out to the community last week, so most people have seen this, but we're looking at a start time of 8:45 for the middle school and the high school with an end time of 3:45. Elementary schools would be 8:10 to 2:45. I'll explain why in just one minute. And it's important for me to note that this is not set in stone. There's an opportunity for us to get feedback from parents, from teachers, from students, make adjustments, and based upon a number of considerations. So there are, as the TED Talk speaker noted, there are a lot of considerations as we're looking at this change in schedule for next year. Transportation is a major one. So we have what we call tiered busing in Princeton. The same buses that currently take our elementary, middle-school kids to school are the ones that take our high school students to school. And we need about 35 minutes between routes for the buses to turn around and get the other group of kids. So if we didn't tier our buses, one, we would double our transportation budget, and, two, we would probably not be able to get enough drivers, because there's a shortage of drivers in New Jersey as it is. So we're looking at those tiered busing costs. We have to pay attention to our non-public schools. We have a dozen or so non-public schools who have different start times. We are looking—have having to collaborate with the Charter School, which has a different start time. And also, we have to be very considerate of Cranberry, that sends students across Route One, and they also have tiered busing. So those same buses that brought—the bring the Cranberry students from across Route One to the Princeton High School have to then go back again, get their elementary and middle-school students, and bring them to school. So there are a lot of considerations just around transportation and associated costs. So we're trying to work those out, and with the proposed schedule that we have now, we actually think we can save a few thousand dollars. But changing it even a few minutes one way or the other can add buses to the routes and rapidly raise the cost. Athletics and extracurricular activities. If we're ending the day at 3:45, we're the only school that's doing that, number one, so in the county. So we have to work out some kind of cooperative measures with the leagues and with the other teams that we play in terms of scheduling. We don't currently have lighted fields, so that's an area for us, too, especially in the fall, when the sun goes down at 4:30, 4:45. We need places to practice and play. So we have to think about that. We have to think about childcare, potentially for our staff and for our parents, you know, those who have kids, you know, teachers who may have students who are going to be getting out of their schools in a different district, getting out early, and then the teachers won't get home until, you know, after 3:45, obviously, to take care of them. So we have to make those—look at those considerations. Commute times to and from school, there are probably another—a host of other issues that we really do need to be focusing on. And so this is really a time for us to be getting feedback, which is why we're making this presentation tonight. We're trying to put the information out early so that we can generate helpful suggestions from students, staff, parents, about the start times, the end times, the ability for us to help with the athletics or the extracurricular activities. And so between now and January 15th, we're hoping to get that feedback and make adjustments. We're on a bit of a timeline, because we have to get our RFP out for contracted buses in January, by the end of January. So if we are going to go with a different start time, we need to be able to put that out for our contracted buses in order for them to bid on that and make that work with our system. Consideration for other issues: athletics, childcare can be ongoing after that the bus contracts go out. So those are some of the considerations that we're looking at in Princeton. I wanted people to understand the Challenge Success data and how that was driving a lot of our thinking. There was a concern that our students were very stressed and were experiencing between six and six-and-a-half hours of sleep a night. And this was something very positive that we could do to make a difference in their lives and felt that it was the right thing to do. So we are—we're hopeful that by putting the information out now, we can have constructive dialogue about the ways that we can make this happen and work through any of the issues that we know are going to come up as we move forward with this. So I would just invite the board, if you have questions or comments, to share those
So I just wanted to say thank you, Steve. I appreciate the presentation. I also appreciate your taking the lead on this. It is—there are a lot of moving parts, and there are a lot of considerations to think of. But the one thing that is clear is that this is what's best for the kids. And I think if we always do what's best for the kids, that's a good way to run the district. So thank you for your leadership on this.
Thank you. I agree with what Daphna said. As far as getting feedback from the public, I second that. The board is really looking for feedback, as well, you know, as what you said. What's the best way to receive that feedback?
Superintendent account. Email me, and I've been getting plenty of it. I've got pictures of traffic jams on Route One with people—my Cranberry parents trying to get across the—I mean, there's a lot of considerations. And I do appreciate getting that information, and we'll try and take it all into consideration.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm done now.
Great.
All right. Can move on with the meeting.
Well, thanks, Steve. Thanks for all you do. And there's, as I said in my remarks, there's a lot, just so many great things going on. And, you know, we're really excited to be doing these things for the kids. But, Steve, when I listen to your report, it just makes me realize how long we're actually going to be here tonight, which is—so—but that's okay. So with that, we move on to Item H, which is the harassment intimidation bullying report. And again, just to remind everyone, Ms. Kennedy, as a consent item, we're going to do discussion, any discussion. We need a motion now or not a motion? Okay. So any discussion on Item H? We spoke about it in closed session. And if there is none, then we'll move on to Item I, which is our board committee reports. As you know, a lot of the real action in the school board process happens in the committees. And so if we start out with our student board members, as always, so we will turn it over to Amy Wang and Brian Lu for your report.
Hello, everyone. So in the brief time span since the last meeting, there have been a lot of changes for our district. And for one, we're very excited to work with the new people selected by our community in this dynamic time for our district over here. Oh, there. Okay. Moreover, us over here at the high school had our first taste of the proposed bell schedule for the 2018-19 school year, and we followed up with a survey to document what the student body thought of the experiment. A significant portion of students, 61.7%, rated their ability to concentrate at four or above out of five, with five being—they could concentrate very well and one being they were basically distracted and asleep the whole time. So 51.9% of students reported that they believed their workload was reduced thanks to the new schedule. However, as noted in many open-ended responses and in some of our own anecdotal observations, the fact that there were only two sample days for us to get an impression of the new schedule means that, for a lot of people, they haven't had sufficient experiences to come to a conclusion. We think it'd be beneficial to have a longer block experimental period later in the year for students and teachers to further develop opinions and plans for the future. Another interesting data point is that 34.9% of responses felt as if a lot of their difficult classes were concentrated in a single day, whereas other days could simply be occupied by two, three periods sometimes. Other concerns voiced, including those regarding difficulties for those wanting to take university courses and a potential loss of 149 days that a lot of students use to fit in jobs, community service hours, and even homework when they can't find out their time for it. Another potential, as Drew brought up by a student, is, as I quote here, "Sure, you reduce homework because it's spread over two nights, but you force students to have better time management, or they end up procrastinating even more, and high school students are notoriously bad at managing their time." I can attest to that one. Some other students recognize how teachers were given months to adequately prepare for only one particular double period, and thus found a special activity for a day instead of just a usual lesson. And this could lead to some potential flaws, especially in a two-day sample period, because how these students will see a block scheduling might be different from how it would be if this sort of double period had to be planned for consistently, instead of just having one special day for the teachers to find something for it. Overall, though, 49.8% of students had a positive impression, 19.1% of responses had no strong feelings whatsoever, and 31.1% of our students had a negative impression. This is a sample size of 235 responses.
Yeah. We also wanted to bring up some of the results that the tower had collected for the spread on the Board of Education election last month. So out of 568 randomly surveyed students who were asked to rank their top three priorities and issues that they hoped to be addressed, from a list of ideas that had been generated during the election that the candidates had proposed. So some of these issues included overcrowding at PHS, having a later start time, racial literacy, cheating, advanced topics versus advanced placement classes, just to name a few. So from the pool of 568 students, 72% reported that reduced homework is something that they would hope to see addressed, and then 59% wished for a later starter time. So that is very appropriate for this discussion. And then 34% wanted to address overcrowding at Princeton High School, and 30% wished for a greater variety of courses offered. We wanted to share these results and hope that it will help frame the discussions that happen with the new and current board members moving forward. So additionally, over the NJEA weekend, Brian and I had met with a math supervisor, Mrs. Kraus, and a teacher to discuss a short survey on the new math homework policy to administer to all students. We were very happy with experimentation in homework policy and that the department has undertaken, and believe that an accompanying survey to assess how it has benefited students will be helpful for creating future policies. So we hope to bring—to be able to bring back those results to share with you during the next meeting and to continue working with the math department in that regard. And during that meeting, we had also discussed how the flexibility of block scheduling next year will also allow math teachers to pursue projects for students to apply what they've learned in the classroom. I, for one, got to optimize a dumpster in my multi-variable class, so that was quite fun. So we're really excited for the upcoming informal board meeting that will be held in December in the evening time, and we plan to advertise that event very heavily to the students and to the teachers to get them to come. Yeah, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Brian. Okay. And next, we'll turn to Facilities, chaired by Daphne Kendall.
Thanks, Pat. Facilities met yesterday here at Valley Road for approximately three hours. We first discussed the ongoing—
Sorry.
We first discussed the ongoing energy audit. The facilities department is gathering data for the energy audit, which is being conducted by New Jersey Clean Energy. The company will provide the district with a list of recommendations, including potentially solar and replacement of all lights, which may be included in the referendum. Some grants may also be available, and we hope to involve students with the project. We continued to discuss in closed session the pending referendum and plans about that, including the purchase of real estate for potential acquisition. Finally, the superintendent and I met with representatives of the Bill Committee at Riverside School. They're seeking to honor the late Riverside Principal, Bill Cirillo. The facilities committee, on behalf of the district, is committed to permanently honoring Mr. Cirillo for his service as a principal of Riverside Elementary School and for his service to the community as a coach and advocate for athletics. The committee will be pursuing this based on the guidance of the policy committee regarding naming of facilities and particularly of school buildings. And our next meeting is December 12th here at Valley Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Daphna. And I just wanted to point out that the meeting that Brian—and I wasn't sure that was already set up—but just so the public knows, in December, it sounds like we have a plan now to have an informal board meeting, and that arose out of a discussion that we had in an off-site meeting to talk about superintendent—is that set up?
No. It's Big Bagels with the Board.
Oh, the Bagels with the Board. Okay. Well, then, as long as—it's—because that's fine, that's December, but then, as long as I'm saying it, I may as well spill the beans that we talked about having an informal board meeting at some point that involves no agenda, simply to talk about educational issues and other things that are important to both the board and the community, and have it open to the public. So rather than having a more structured setting, at some point in the future, we'd like to have a sort of discussion forum with the community. So anyway, I thought that's what you were referring to.
Can I just jump in, actually, about the event in December? We are renaming Bagels with the Board to being Name Meet the Board, because we are holding these sessions at different times of the day. So our December meeting is at 6:00 p.m. on December 6th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. here in this room, Wednesday, December 6th. And we invite the community to join us, and we're really happy to hear that you're speaking about it with students as well. We also invite our staff, if you're able to, to also be able to join us at that point. We're looking to schedule our next event at 3:00 p.m. in March at the high school, and that date is TBD.
Great.
Great. Thank you. Okay. And finance, Justin's absent tonight. Is—Bill, you're going to give the—
I think I'm going to try.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
So we had our finance committee meeting tonight. We looked at the financial reports and the bills and approved that, but then we did a little—I don't know if I'd call it informal brainstorming, looking at finances related to a variety of topics, trying to figure out ways we could save money. We proposed ideas and— We proposed ideas, and we're still looking at that. And what was nice about it is these are, this meeting is open, so people are welcome to attend, take part in these discussions, throw out ideas. You know, I threw out ideas about buses to Stephanie, and she would say, "Well, we're already doing that." So, yeah, there's just a few of us on ideas, so more people can show up, throw out ideas, and see what happens. So, I recommend, if you can, try to make these committee meetings when they're open. It's interesting, and you get your voice heard. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, next, personnel with Chair Connie Witter.
Okay, the Personnel Committee met on November 6th from 8:45 to 11:15. The minutes of October 16th were reviewed and approved. Faculty attendance. The faculty attendance for 2016 through 2017 school year was at 97.8% compared to the state's average of 95%. We would like to thank the faculty for their high attendance record. APR ratings for 2016 and 2017. Of the 400 teaching and professional staff members in PRIA, 286 were rated highly effective, 111 were rated effective, and three were rated partially effective. This does not include the six staff members who submitted letters of resignation prior to the school year. The committee reviewed the recent HR letter, which included profiles of the Little Brook principal, Luis Ramirez, and Superintendent of Guidance Services Christina Donovan. Recent residency updates. The residency audit committee is making headway as it reviews the legal residence address for all students enrolled in the district, six schools, as well as the Princeton Charter School. The committee also looked into new procedures going forward to ensure students are properly domiciled in the district. Staffing update. Mickey Cristofelli presented the data needed for a new special education supervisor and administrative secretary for the Office of Student Services. Given the breakage of higher-than-expected mid-year retirement and other contained measured causes, the committee approved the request. Substitute handbooks and November leaves of absences were reviewed. The committee discussed several confidential matters. Next meeting, Monday, December 4th, 8:45, Valley Road.
Thank you, Connie. Okay, next, policy with Chair Betsy Baglio.
Thank you. The Policy Committee met here in this room Monday, November 6th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. As a result of our discussion at the meeting, we have four policies on tonight's agenda. The policy regarding the recording of board meetings has been revised and is on the agenda for a second reading. This revised policy clarifies language in the section related to electronic recording of board meetings. We have three policies on tonight's agenda for a first reading. The school trips policy outlines the types of trips our students take and affirms, reaffirms, that no student may be excluded due to inability to pay. The school dress policy includes an introductory section directing that dress codes be applied consistently regardless of race, sex, gender, socioeconomic issues, et cetera, and refers families to each school's specific handbook for dress codes consistent with this policy. Finally, the electronic communication and recording device policy was amended to include additional sections related to academic integrity and expectations of personal privacy and a removal of a section about paging devices. Students and parents should refer to each school's handbook for specific rules regarding cellphone use in school. There is also a large set of bylaws on tonight's agenda for a first reading only, and the Policy Committee wants the public to understand this process. The Princeton Public Schools policy manual is in the process of being realigned by the Policy Department of the New Jersey School Board Association. The bylaws that are on tonight's agenda comprise the first chapter to be presented to the board for a first reading, and they're listed exactly as they were received by us, from the New Jersey School Board Association. A first reading does not change current policy in any way, and the revisions to these bylaws are ongoing. Every member of the Policy Committee has been tasked with reviewing a set of each of these new bylaws for accuracy, and they will be reviewed and discussed in detail during the next Policy Committee meeting, which is from noon to 3:00 PM on December 5th. The public is invited and encouraged to attend the entirety of the meeting. Can I ask if any of our colleagues have questions about that process? Okay, great.
Okay, thanks. And we just keep going now with student achievement.
Yes, one more. Student achievement met here in this room on Friday, November 3rd from 12:00 to 3:00. We have one student trip on the agenda this evening. Dr. Cohen, Supervisor of Science, attended student achievement with teachers at a variety of grade levels to present to the committee about recent science curriculum work that's been done. The committee heard presentations about the launch of Amplify Science at the elementary level and scientific research and environmental science classes at Princeton High School. Principal Gary Snyder from Princeton High School attended student achievement as well to update the committee on a number of topics. First, as Superintendent Cochran said, he shared that the Stanford survey will be distributed at Princeton High School again in December. Overall, it will be a very similar survey to last year, and the results will be able to be compared to those from last year. At the request of the committee, Mr. Snyder also addressed the topic of academic integrity at PHS and expects this issue will improve as changes are made to the curriculum, the instruction in our school, and the way assessments are done, as well as the schedule. Finally, Mr. Snyder did discuss the block schedule trial that took place last month and shared upcoming plans for the, updated plans for the new schedule to be put in place next year. The development of the schedule is a work in progress, and the committee is excited to hear more about the plans for and implementation of this new schedule in the months to come. Board member Fern Spruill shared with the committee the recent trip she took to the National Museum of African-American History and Culture, and the committee discussed how a visit to this museum could be added to our curriculum. And finally, those in attendance briefly discussed the plans for distribution of the upcoming parent survey. The Student Achievement Committee will meet twice before the December board meeting, and the public is invited to each of these meetings. The dates are Monday, November 20th, and Friday, December 1st at 11:30 here in this room.
Okay, thank you, Betsy. And with that, we'll move to our second public forum. This is Item J for Agenda Items Only. If anyone has any questions or comments on Agenda Items, please come to the microphone. Again, just state your name and your address and anything you'd like to talk about about the agenda.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Tuck-Ponder, 208 Laurel Circle. Thank you, first of all, for giving me the opportunity to speak. Patrick, thank you very much for your kind words. I'm really looking forward to serving on this board very soon. I wanted to comment on the bias incident at John Witherspoon and also the superintendent's response, which I think is a great response. But one of the things that strikes me is that what happens in the schools reflects the mood and the culture and the environment in our nation and in our town. And one of the things that we constantly struggle with is that the schools aren't going to be able to address this issue alone. They are, everybody has a responsibility to respond to these bias incidents in the town. And so, one of the things I wanted to suggest is that when the consultant has the focus groups, I think it might be a great idea for perhaps the district to take the first step and include a representative from the police, a representative from, or representatives from the religious community, municipal leaders, but folks in the larger community as part of these focus groups. Because this poison that we have flowing through our town, because we keep having these incidents happen over and over and over again, the symptoms are being exhibited by our children. But the sickness goes through all levels in the municipality. And my suggestion would just be that we just open our doors up and make sure that we engage the larger community in our conversation and ask that the larger community engage the district in the conversations that they're having. And that's it. Thank you.
Michelle, thank you. I just, building on your suggestion, I just want to share with the board that tomorrow I'll be, I reached out over the weekend to Adam Feldman, Rabbi Feldman, and to Pastor Dave Davies as the head of the clergy council in town. And I'll be meeting with them tomorrow. But that's part of the effort to sort of, to reach out and say, "We can't do this alone, and we need to be linked together in solving, finding ways to address this, these issues of hate and to truly advocate for all of us to be upstanders." So, I'm looking forward to having that conversation tomorrow and other conversations with community leaders as we join together to address these issues.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Michelle. Any other questions or comments? Okay, if there are none, then we move to Item K, which is Policies. And again, since most of these Agenda Items from K on out, except for a couple, are consent in nature, we just have questions or comments informally, and then we'll do them at the end. So, any comments on, let's say, K1? First of all, the first reading policy is quite a few of them. I would like to say one thing, if nobody minds, which is I'd just like to commend the Policy Committee on the, it's just a first reading, so there's still time for feedback. But the school dress policy, as the father of a girl, I think it just brings the school dress, the whole concept of what's appropriate in terms of school dress into the modern age. And I'm sure she will appreciate all of your work on that because it really is a sensibly written and really, I think, well-done policy. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on any of these policies, either one or two? Okay, and hearing done, then we move on to Item L, which is a vote.
Actually, could I say one thing? We are, as I mentioned in the report, we are transitioning to this New Jersey School Boards Association policy manual. So, the bylaws that are before you for a first reading are the only chapter that we plan to adopt in this calendar year. So, when the Policy Committee is reconstituted with different members in January, the review of the other chapters will be done gradually at that time. We wanted to welcome our new board members with fresh, new bylaws for their reading, for their reading pleasure and for the, you know, to inform the community as well. But that is why we're starting where we are.
Great, thanks, Betsy. Okay, so Item L actually is a vote, a roll-call vote. And this is Personnel Actions, which is L1 and the attachment. Is there anything, Lou, that you want to mention?
Yeah, we have, we have two retirees.
Can we first and second?
Oh, we need to just open it for, so we can have a motion to discuss. I want Debbie and a second Greg. Okay. Now, we're all set. Sorry, Lou.
Okay. But before I do the two retirees, just the final score in from Rowan University.
Yes, yes, yes.
And regarding the boys' state sexual semifinal game, Princeton has pulled the upset. Atticus Lynch scored a goal. It was 1-0 Princeton. Atticus Lynch scored the goal with 27 minutes to go. And so, they will move on to the state finals, which will be held at Kane University Sunday at 3:00 PM. And they will try to do something that no other school has done, win a title in Group 2, Group 3, and at Group 4. So, hopefully, everybody will go to Kane Sunday at 3:00 PM and root the boys on. Now, retirees, also worthy of much applause. We have two retirees on the agenda tonight. One is Kathy DiLorenzo, another Pat Ray. I'm going to talk about Kathy first. Kathy has worked in the Princeton schools for the last 18 years, both at Princeton High School and currently at John Witherspoon as a guidance counselor. She's written countless recommendations, guided scores of students and parents through the college process at PHS, and guided middle school students and their parents in navigating the complexities when first transitioning from 5th to 6th grade at the middle school level, as well as from 8th grade to the high school. She formerly worked as a director of guidance at McCarston High School in Hamilton and also as a guidance counselor in Montgomery High School and Upper Freehold Elementary and Middle Schools. Kathy established the first career fair at the high school, coordinated testing at the various grade levels, served as the liaison with the county vocational schools, and developed programs for students in the areas of grief and loss counseling. Students and parents have come to trust her advice over the years, her caring spirit, and her never-ending support. So, we thank her for her contributions over the years and wish her well in her retirement. Our second retiree on the agenda tonight is Pat Ray. Pat has served as drama teacher at Princeton High School since 2000. A former dancer on Broadway who worked with many, including Bob Fosse, Ms. Ray has taught many students who have gone on to careers in movies and on the stage. In the recent past years, Ms. Ray also instituted two additional black box productions in addition to the Fall Drama and Spring Musical to attract and encourage students to take an interest in the arts, and the drama program has flourished due to her efforts. For many drama productions, to name a few, we have seen The Crucible, Love's Labor Lost, Beggar's Opera, Pride and Prejudice, Spoon River Anthology, Stage Door, and The Witches. Her spring musical productions over the years have included Crazy for You, Chicago, Hello, Dolly, Pippin, The Wizard of Oz, Anything Goes, The Boyfriend, City of Angels, A Little Night Music, and Beauty and the Beast, to name a few. This spring's musical, which will be her last, will be a return to one of her first, and it will be Pippin. Pat was also instrumental in providing advice for acoustics and staging when the stage of the current Performing Arts Center was being constructed over a dozen years ago. As anyone who has ventured into a classroom in the Black Box Theater on the second floor of PHS knows, one could see Ms. Ray inspiring students every day. Whether providing instructions and expecting each student to do their very best, whether showing them and talking to them with a dry wit and great sense of humor, or bringing confidence in performing to each student, she does a wonderful job. Audiences who have seen her plays and musicals and student-run performances all rave about the professionalism and expertise of the actors, actresses, cast, crew, set designs, and costumes. Pat has served as an outstanding teacher and inspiration to many students by running not only an excellent model drama program, but also in her caring of all students and wanting them to flourish not only as actors, but also as individuals through the arts. So, we thank her for her many years, many plays, many productions, and her many contributions, and look forward to hearing about the third act of her life's play.
Thank you, Lou. So, with that...
I do have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
So, on L, onsite admin for track meet rental? I didn't know what that was.
What is that?
What is that?
Oh, basically, that is, there needs to be an administrative president or a district staff member president when we're having track meets. And they're rented not only by our staff, but also by outside staff, outside agents. So, somebody has to be present. And so, we assign it to one of our, you know, building monitors to be there for security purposes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments on Item L? And this is a roll-call vote?
It includes the addendum.
Including the blue addendum that circulated earlier to the board.
Patrick Sullivan.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Bill Hare.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Fern Spruill.
Yes.
Greg Stankowitz.
Yes.
And Connie Witter.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Moving on to Item M. This is Curriculum and Instruction. Any questions or comments on Item M?
Yeah, for number four, I didn't know what kind of consulting Amy Hornbeck was doing. So, we, as a school district, pay for her to teach? I just want to make sure I understand. For her to teach St. Paul faculty? Is that what you're saying?
No, students. It's for, it's for a student at St. Paul's, one of our students who is at St. Paul's.
So, one of our students is at St. Paul's, and so she's doing professional? I'm confused.
Yeah, let me help you out there.
Okay.
These are Title, No Child Left Behind funds. So, we are a flow-through district. So, funds come to the district that go to the private schools. For instance, in this case, St. Paul's. So, the students that are residents of Princeton who attend St. Paul's, who are eligible for these services that are offered by Title 2A, will be serviced at St. Paul's. So, we have to, we have to do the purchasing. If it's, if we're buying something, we have to do the purchase supply of the supply. If it's a consultant, we have to pay for the consultant. They select the consultant, but we have to generate the purchase order and pay for the service. service.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Any other question, any questions on item M.? Then moving on to item N., questions or comments?
Number two, I didn't know, the frontline technology?
Frontline technology is the I. E. P. software that Special Services uses under Miki's department. So frontline is just the manufacturer-
Okay, and it's a, it's just a renewal? It's the same one we've been using?
Yes, it was last month, but apparently there was an additional fee. If you look under, we tried to put the, under executive comments, you should see, Debbie, where explanation as to why there was a revision.
Okay. So are 504s on that, too?
That, you stumped me on that one, I don't know.
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions on, on item N.? And moving on to that, item O., which are the items that were reviewed in finance tonight. Any questions on item O.? I just have one comment on O., which is, we have several donations on the list tonight. Couple from Princeton Education Foundation and also from the Princeton High School P. T. O. So I just wanted to thank both of those organizations for all that they do for our kids. We rely on the generosity of the people in this town who believe and support in public education, and so just wanted to shout out to them and thank them for all that they do for our, for our children. And once again, they're on the, they're on the agenda many, many times, so it shows you that the commitment that they have, but we do appreciate all that they do.
I might just like to add again, if you look at the revision, under the executive session, you'll see the explanation of the revision under the Dodge Caravan. We board approved that last month. We had, we had a chain, as you can see, what, are you picking it up? Are you reading it, any of the board members?
Are you going to give the revision to the I. E. P. Direct?
No.
No, no, I moved on to the second revision, yeah.
Yeah.
And for the public, the reason was, is by the time we board approved the original purchase, the dealership sold the van that they had priced, so Donna tried to beat them up a little bit, but they did come with another price, and they were still the lowest price, but a different model. So it had a couple other, it was a little bit more expensive. But that's what we're starting to do, put the explanation in.
Very nice.
That's great.
I love it.
And so by buying this van for $24,000, we're taking over a route that cost us $65,000. So we're saving $40,000. So thank you.
And that's 65 a year.
Yeah, no, it's great.
Yeah, and that's Donna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just have one comment. It's great that we're getting all this money to buy new technology, and I'm just curious, is this part of kind of our three-year technology plan? He's-
He's not, he's only been here a week.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
So I think this was-
Sorry. Yes, he's our, our new technology director, has only been with us since November 1st, but, so it's, it's not part of our three-year plan, which has yet to be written, but it is part of what was budgeted for purchase for this, for this year.
Well, actually, no, because it's grants. Sorry, not to, it was P. E. F. grant funds.
Right, no, I know.
But the school, but the, these, in two incidences, two instances, the library, Learning Commons, Learning Center at the high school requested upgrades to computers, to the P. E. F.
Okay.
So they could only fund up to $10,000, so the P. T. O. offered to, to do the difference. And then there was some that was budgeted under technology, but not the full amount. The full amount was actually even, even more. This is just to accept the grant. I think there were 13,000 or 18,000 or 20,000 or something. So that part was budgeted, but then this part wasn't, was to be able to replace all of those in the media center.
For the high school.
For the high school.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. And that leads us to the consent vote on all of the consent agenda items. So, and I think we're going to do that online. Is that correct? Yeah. This is item P.
Just need a first and a second.
Oh, yeah, so can we have a first, can we have a motion, Debbie, and a second, Bill? All consent items.
Okay, you're able to vote. When we actually get to the agenda, it kind of moves along.
Yeah, here we did. All set? Oh, that's moving along faster, great.
You do your best.
Yeah, exactly. So now we have one more public comment session on any topic. If anyone would like to come and make a comment tonight, this is your last chance. Dr. Carell.
Is the mic on?
Yeah.
Okay. Bob Carell, I teach at the high school. Two things, before I talk about the Bell Committee, which I was a part of, or still am part of, we meet tomorrow, I wanted to go back a month and reflect on the presentation that Superintendent made about the referendum and the expansion at the high school. If I recall correctly from your presentation, you said that the high school is currently roughly 200 students over capacity.
Correct.
And that the future growth is an additional 200 students that we can foresee in the near-to-medium future.
Correct.
Okay. My math, in my head, is 25 students equals one classroom, roughly. So 200 plus 200 is 400, divided by 25 would be an additional 16 classrooms. You said in your presentation, eight to 12 classrooms.
Twelve, I said 12, I think. Right, yeah.
Okay, even if you said 12, I'm worried we're selling ourselves short, that we're not going to do enough. I realize money is always an issue, but I just worry that the long-term vision is not what we really need it to be for the space. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Fair enough, no, thank you.
In terms of the Bell Committee, I will tell you, the 8:45 took the members of the Bell Committee by surprise. We did not see that coming. We thought 8:15 was going to be a hard enough sell, as it was. I, you've heard me for the last couple of years, I fully support moving the clock back, but that is not universal across the teaching staff, I want you to know. And here is my concern with an 8:45 time. We just talked about the success of the soccer team. If this was next year, and we're going out to practice tomorrow at, say, 4:15, how long is that practice going to last? About 15 minutes without lights on the field? Now, that's a solvable problem. But we also talked about the cross-country team, moving on to the Muta Champions. Are you looking forward to the liability of those kids running in the dark on the roads after daylight saving time ends? I, I think that's a serious concern that we have to address. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Bob.
I'll just point out, about 100 years ago, in my high school, what we did was, we had option two, or the equivalent of option two, and varsity athletes got the last period off to do their, to do practice. So we got out at 3:30, practice for varsity athletes started 2:40, 2:45, whatever it was, and that kind of solved that, that problem. And we started at 8:15, so.
I, my understanding is, right now, the option two is not working as well as we envisioned it, mostly because of state regulations, not because of anything we're doing, that the state is, puts such onerous regulations on it that a lot of the kids say it's just not worth the effort, and they go to, it's easier just to go to gym. So I, there are things we could do, I just, these are concerns that, that rattle around in my head.
Yep. Bob, it's exactly why we did the presentation now, so that you had plenty of time to consider our unintended consequences.
Oh, trust me, you're going to hear plenty, plenty of feedback from the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you got that right, yeah. I'm sure we go. Okay, any other public comment?
Just one more teacher.
Okay.
Patty Manhart, I also teach at the high school. I was just thinking of one question as I was, you know, listening to concerns of my colleagues, and it's about childcare, and I know that's a problem that we'll work through. It came up in the TED Talk. I just hope we can look to other models of schools that have pushed their start times back to see what has been effective, whether it's offering stipends to teachers that need to cover those additional costs of childcare, or expanding the programs that we offer in district, because I'm sure those models are out there. I just hope we can start that process of researching and finding them, so.
Yep, yep. Thank you, Patty.
Thank you. Any other comments? And okay, hearing none, then we move to item R., closing discussion, which used to be called Old Business, New Business. Now it's any thoughts, comments from, from members of the Board?
I just, I did want to say one thing, that this, this Friday, Annie and I are going to be attending a conference at Rutgers on gifted education. Oh, and Betsy, you're going as well, yeah. So we'll look forward to reporting back on that to at least Student Achievement Committee in December.
Great, thank you. Okay, with that, we move to item S., which is a German, so we need a motion and a second, please. Greg, and a second, Debbie. All in favor? Do we have to vote? Is this an election night vote? No, okay, so we're good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you to the public for coming tonight. Really appreciate your, your attendance.
Everyone go home and get some sleep.
Meeting adjourned.